Bob and I are gonna hit the links on Friday.
Are you?
Yeah.
You guys gonna wear chains together? Link up together?
It'd be a good idea, yeah. Watching the, watching the time on my phone.
Uh, it's almost there.
Almost, yep.
Yep. Good evening. Who says good evening?
That's my Mickey Mouse, uh, watch.
Oh. Good evening, Mickey Mouse.
Yeah.
Tells me everything that I need to know on a regular basis.
There you go. Okay, it is five thirty. So, good evening, everyone. This is our city council study session for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. And per the governor's emergency proclamation, twenty dash twenty-eight, the city of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings at this time. So, once again, this meeting is being held virtually and telephonically. Shaun, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J-Rod.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Yep, having her. Councilmember Trout Manuel is excused. Okay, thank you. Any announcements, reports, or presentations?
There's Councilmember Sterns.
No, Chair. Councilmember Sterns? Are you present now?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we will move on to our agenda items for council discussions for this evening under item four A. We have the solid waste contract procurement with Director Thomas.
Hello, council. Hello, mayor. Um, I'm only gonna be here for a second just to introduce to you Joan Nelson, our acting utility billing, um, account manager. And she is going to give you a little bit of background on the RFP that we are doing for solid waste services, as well as where we're at in that process, and an updated calendar on where we're going moving forward. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Joan.
Okay, can everyone see my screen and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, for those of you who have been on council for a while, you have, you knew that we were going through our solid waste collection contracts process. Um, we prepare well in advance because there's a lot of things that have to happen. So, I'm, as Jamie said, I'm here today to just give you an update on where we're at. Just a second, trying to get my arrows to work. Okay, there we go. So, on your screen, you have a map of our solid waste collection service areas as they are now. We have two haulers in the city of Auburn, Waste Management, who's represented in that orange service area. That's our main collection area. Those are the customers that, um, the city does the customer service for, as well as bills for. Um, and then we have a franchise agreement for the area in blue with Republic Services. Um, and both of our contracts, our franchise and, and our regular contract are going to expire on September thirtieth of next year. So, um, for the past couple of years, we've been preparing, um, to see who our next hauler is going to be. And we're very excited because for the first time ever, we will have one contracted hauler in the city. So, all of our residents will get the same services, have the same rates. Um, we're very excited about it. So, this is the, the schedule that we've been on. Um, we exercised, our, our contract that we're on now was a seven-year contract that was negotiated in two thousand and eleven, and it had two two-year extension options. So, we are in our second extension, so we can't extend any further. Um, so, last September, we held meetings with all of our local solid waste companies, uh, Waste Management, Waste Connections, Recology, Republic Services, even Cedar Grove Composting, who does the, the compost collection for most of the, the area, um, just to talk to them about, uh, the contracts and, um, what, you know, what thoughts they had on things, how to make sure that we're doing a transparent process, we're setting an even playing field. Um, so we, those meetings were very productive when we took all the information from those meetings, and we worked with a consultant, Jeff Brown, from Epicenter Services. He's been pretty much the solid waste contract expert of the area, and he's soon to retire, so we were very happy to have him on board. Um, and he helped us draft our request for proposal. And, um, what we do in the solid waste industry is we actually send out an industry review. So, we sent that out, um, on November, uh, fifth of last year, just to make sure that we're putting contract items, not only that work for the city, but that are also going to be feasible for the haulers. So, we put that out, we get comments back, we take all of our information from what we want, feedback we've gotten from, uh, interviews, and we released our official, um, request for proposal on December nineteenth of twenty nineteen. So, that kinda set off the process. Um, and then, we have opportunities for the different haulers to ask questions, um, clarification, a lot of it's on container numbers and different services. So, there was two opportunities, one in January, one in February. And then, the final proposals were due on May first. Our original due date was April fifteenth, but due to COVID, we wanted to give people a little bit more time to figure out how, and us a little bit more time on how we were gonna actually receive these proposals. So, a big thank you to all of the haulers, and the city clerk, and everybody, um, being adaptable. Um, we had, it was interesting turning in those proposals, but we got it done. And then, once those proposals are in, um, we put together, the city had an evaluation team, made up of five staff members from different areas of the city. And so, we, uh, proposals were distributed to those evaluation members, and, um, they evaluated the written proposals, and then we also, um, did site tours and visits to the different facilities of each hauler, um, and then scored, um, based on some different, um, elements that I'll go over a little bit later. So, that brings us to where we're at, number nine, um, selection and finalization of the contract. Um, in the request for proposal, there's a draft contract that lays out everything, but, um, once we select the hauler that we wanna move forward with, there are some things we need to finalize, like rates, um, different things that were included in the proposals that maybe weren't in the original, um, contract. So, that's where we're at. Um, and then, so we wanna refill where we're at, and then the next step, again, finalize that, and then we expect to bring the final contract to you for approval, probably late September of this year. So, that way, we have a full year, um, for the next hauler to get ready to order trucks, to order carts, to do routing, um, do all the outreach that has to happen, um, so that's kinda the next step. Um, it'll, it'll be a year of preparing for transition. Sorry, my slides are advancing very slowly. Okay. So, our scoring is based on sixty percent quantitative, so based on the rates, and forty percent qualitative. So, the written proposal valuation is, um, is part of the qualitative. And so, um, as each of the reviewers went through, they had six elements to score on, um, as they went through the proposal. Customer service, operations, outreach and education, um, contract implementation, materials management, and innovation and sustainability. Um, one thing I have to say is, in this region, we are blessed to have very good haulers. Um, you know, they're national companies, they're capable pretty much of anything. Um, so you will notice that the scores are relatively close, um, but definitely, you know, in the proposals, um, there was always a clear, um, hauler that, um, kinda outscored the other one in those, those written evaluations. So, the site visit interview evaluation, um, is also part of the, the qualitative. So, this is based on, we visited the material recycling facilities. Both of these haulers have great facilities, they're, have huge capacities, um, they take in materials from other states, um, so they were pretty equally matched. Um, trucks and technology, um, in the contract, we wrote that they'd be starting with new trucks, so that kinda puts them all, and they both have, um, compressed natural gas or CNG capabilities. So, the one thing that Waste Management outscored on was that they already used all of the, um, high-end routing technology, um, and basically tablets, um, taking pictures of extras, it's, they already have it. Republic would have it at the start of the contract, so we, we scored Waste Management a little higher on that one. Um, operations facilities, they both have facilities local. Republic is in Kent, Waste Management's right here in Auburn, you could probably hit it with a long drive. Um, and, um, Waste Management scored higher on that. They really had a really good maintenance team, and they seemed very passionate, and just a very clean, well-organized facility. And then, interviews, um, Republic had a higher score than Waste Management on that. Um, they just, Republic did a really, really strong interview, so. So, this next slide is the total accumulation of the evaluation process between the two, um, proposers, Republic Services and Waste Management. Um, our consultant, he did the rate evaluation, and, um, Waste Management was about five hundred thousand less per year, um, so they scored higher in that. Um, and then, as you can see, once we waited, the written proposals, Waste Management was higher in that, and the interviews. Um, for a final tally, uh, Republic Services, eighty-eight point zero three, and Waste Management, ninety-three point four three. So, with all that, with this evaluation process we went to, we recommend moving forward with finalizing, um, a contract with Waste Management. Um, we really feel that we've gone through a very transparent, um, organized evaluation process, and are really confident that this is a, a great next step for the city. Um, as I mentioned before, Republic Services is also a very, you know, capable hauler. If for some reason, discussions fell through with Waste Management, we, we could always, um, move forward with Republic Services, but we really feel that Waste Management, um, is gonna be the right fit for our next hauler to provide the best service package at the lowest rate. With that, I will stop sharing.
Okay. Joan, thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah.
And, uh, I believe you actually did, uh, in the RP, get on all of the items that we brought up previously when this was discussed before council quite a while ago, so appreciate that. Um, I'll start off with a quick question here. Uh, what would the term of the new contract be, and are there any extensions that would be included in that contract?
So, this next contract is gonna be a ten-year contract.
Good.
Um, we did not include any extensions. Um, through the feedback that we received from the different haulers in the initial interviews and in the industry review, um, they, extensions, they just didn't really, we wanted to get the most proposals we could, and, um, we felt with the, the ten-year contract it gives them a strong point to put in the capital investment for trucks and carts, um, and, yeah.
That's great. Ten, ten years sounds really excellent. Appreciate that very much. Good. Counsel, any questions for Joan?
Nope. Okay.
Head shaking, no. Alright, thank you so much, Joan. Appreciate it.
Councilmember J-Rod has a question?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember J-Rod. You're muted.
Joan, thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Um, since I'm new to the council, I got a couple of questions.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, you initially said something about, um, you're gonna sign the contract, then talk to them about, uh, what, what the cost is going to be, if I'm not mistaken?
Um, sorry if I was confusing, but no, we will work out finalizing, we, I mean, we already have initial rates, but there's some things that we can do and, and some alternatives we have to look at. Um, and so, we will bring you the, the contract before it actually gets signed. So, we're gonna work out all those details, and you, in September, you will see a contract that's ready to go, we'll show you the rates, kinda go over all the details of it before it's approved by, by council and signed by the mayor.
And what, what do you mean by rates?
So, um, in, so all the, so in the city of Auburn, we do our own billing, um, and we're actually gonna be switching to contractor billing, but basically, how much people pay for their garbage? So, it's all, there's a long list based on what service someone has, and so, when we get these proposals, it shows, the haulers have proposed, basically, if you have a thirty-five gallon service, they're telling us how much they're gonna charge for that service.
Okay, so, what you're saying is, is Auburn, the city of Auburn is not going to bill the residents?
So, yeah, so currently, we do the billing, but we are switching over to the hauler doing the billing and the customer service. So, yeah.
Okay, so you're totally getting out of it, then, just letting them take care of it?
Yeah, it's, it's a form called a, um, billing agent, where we'll still retain our solid waste fund. So, they are gonna do the billing, but everything they collect will actually go into our bank account, and then we'll pay them their commission rate out of that. So, it allows us to set the retail rates that customers pay, um, and retain our solid waste utility fund.
Okay.
The, the, the citizens will see the bill from the hauler.
Okay, now, the other thing is, um, how, uh, what, how are the charge, how is the contract different from the previous contract?
So, the contract is different from the previous contact, um, contract, because right now, the city does their customer service, so in the new contract, the hauler will do it. There'll be the billing change that we discussed. Um, there's also some, some things that Waste Management has proposed, like doing a couple extra recycle collection events. Um, they are proposing some big-belly compactors that they're gonna put in different places downtown, which are actually, um, they're solar-powered, compacting, you know, garbage cans on the sidewalks.
Okay.
And, we're also switching cart colors. Um, so right now, we have, uh, gray for yard waste and green for garbage, which is very confusing for people. Um, and region-wide, things are changing to be more where gray is garbage and green is yard waste, so we're gonna correct that.
So, so are they gonna change the, the bins then?
Yep, they're, we're getting all-new carts, so.
Okay.
Yeah, everything will be fresh and new, and, um, there'll be a lot of outreach that is worked out. We'll probably have some, you know, hopefully, public meetings if people are interested. Um, but, yeah, there's, there's a lot of information that we're gonna be sending out to residents and businesses.
Okay, alright. Um, what, how is the cost going to be any different?
Um, the reality is, the cost is going to go up. We are on an old contract. Um, we renegotiated in twenty-eleven. Last time the city went out for proposal was two thousand and one. Um, so, and costs have increased, um, recycling costs have increased dramatically, so the costs are going up. Um, you know, we'll do our best to keep things as reasonable as we can, um, and utilizing our solid waste fund where we can to offset some, some costs, so.
Okay, alright. Thank you very much, Joan. I appreciate your, uh, candor.
Yeah.
And Joan?
Yeah.
Maybe you could add a little bit more context. Um, you did mention that there is a, that we were changing, this current contract is going to be, um, transferring the customer service and the billing over to the new solid waste provider. Can you maybe explain to council why there's value and benefit to, to customers to do that?
Yeah, so, you know, the city has done customer service for years, um, and we love it, but there is a point where, um, it's not as efficient, um, so, and it can be confusing for people because they have, you know, they have a card that says Waste Management all over it, but then they're supposed to call the city for things. So, um, or for instance, when there's storm events, and, um, you know, our call center staff of four can get easily overwhelmed, where these haulers have larger call centers that can facilitate incidences like that more. Um, so we really feel that having the hauler do the customer service and the billing, um, will be more efficient and more, um, kinda transparent for people who, they're getting their bill, and that's who they call if they need a new cart, or if they need something switched out, um, need to change their service. So, um, that's kinda why we were switching this way. And we are one of the last cities actually to do our own billing and customer service. There's very, very few around, um, that still do things like we are doing now.
So, uh, uh, this is James again. Um, so basically, what you're saying is, regionally, we are one of the few cities that's still managing the, uh, yard, uh, garbage disposal?
Yeah, so we're one of the few cities that do our own customer service and billing. Most cities have their contract that, the, the person collecting the garbage is the same one billing and the same one providing the customer service. So, that's what we're switching to.
So, uh, what is there to stop the, uh, garbage collection to charge the residents the following year a lot more than, uh, every year they, their charges go up?
So, that's one thing about us using the billing agent, is that we control those retail rates. So, we control the rates to the citizens. So, based on our solid waste fund, we can determine how, what, if there needs to be an increase and how much. So, every year, the cost to us from the hauler is gonna go up, those commission rates go up by the CPI, um, Consumer Price Index.
Uh-huh.
And also, King County tipping fees go up, um, and so, but with those increases, we control the rate that actually is charged, so we can, uh, if we have the fund, we can offset some of those increases.
Okay, alright, so we, we're still keeping an eye on that, then?
Yes.
So, Joan, Joan, um, would you be providing us with the comparison of the current rates versus the new rates?
Yes.
As the contracts, fine, great.
Yep.
Okay, that would be, that would be very helpful.
Uh-huh.
Excellent.
Yep.
Any, any other questions for Joan? Alright, Joan, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Bye.
Alright, our next item on the agenda is ordinance number six seven seven five with Director Gauk.
Good evening, and I'm actually gonna turn it over to Amber Price, who's on the phone, over what the franchise is tonight.
Good, good evening, Amber.
Good evening, deputy mayor and councilmembers. Um, Amber Price, right away specialist with Public Works Department. Draft ordinance number six seven seven five for franchise agreement, FR Ed. two zero dash zero 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 two, is for Puget Sound Energy Electrical Facilities. Um, under Title Twenty of the Auburn City Code and consistent with federal and state law, utility telecom and cable companies that wish to locate their facilities in the city's public rights of way, including the streets, sidewalks, areas above and below the streets and sidewalks, and other areas specifically dedicated to the city for street and roadway purposes, are required to get a franchise agreement with the city. Draft ordinance number six seven seven five is with Puget Sound Energy, uh, for their electrical transmission and distribution facilities that are currently located in the city's right-of-way. These facilities were previously authorized under ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-six. Uh, the facilities are located throughout the city, both aerial and underground, and provide electrical service to residential and commercial customers. The proposed agreement is, would be valid for a term of fifteen years with an option to renew, uh, for an additional five years. The agreement is consistent with the city standard agreement for other franchises of this type, um, and other agreements of this type. An agreement requires that PSC obtain construction permits so that they can make repairs, upgrades, improvements to existing and future facilities. These permits are generally managed, reviewed, and approved through the city's permitting process. Um, in bringing the franchise agreement forward to council for review, city staff has verified that it meets code requirements that council must base your determination on. In a public hearing to consider the application, here public comments is currently scheduled for July twentieth, twenty twenty, at the city council meeting. Be happy to answer any questions you have about this agreement.
Questions for Amber, council? Okay, Amber, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number six seven seven nine with Director Tate.
Uh, good evening, deputy mayor, uh, council, and mayor. I'm gonna turn my presentation over to Senior Planner, Daniel Gauk.
Alright, uh, good evening, uh, deputy mayor and councilmembers. Um, like Jeff just mentioned, I'm Daniel Gauk, uh, Senior Planner with the Department of Community Development. Um, so ordinance number six six seven, or six seven seven nine, uh, which is before you tonight, is a proposed code amendment to Chapter eighteen point six eight of the city's code, which includes, uh, the rules and regulations for making changes to, uh, to city, to the city zoning code, as well as changes to the, uh, city zoning map. The zoning map changes are typically, are commonly referred to as a rezon, that might be a more common term that you're familiar with. Um, the, uh, on May nineteenth, the planning commission held a public hearing, um, didn't receive any testimony, but they, uh, did have some, uh, discussions about it, and, um, recommended that the city council, uh, pass the ordinance. Um, the reason that staff proposed these changes, uh, in the first place, uh, is to provide better guidance for the public when proposing these types of changes, um, so our customers, uh, as well as for staff, and, uh, the planning commission and here examiner when they're reviewing, uh, reviewing them. The, there's two main changes that are proposed in this ordinance, um, one of which is to add rezon review criteria, and then, uh, providing some further clarification on the, uh, different types of rezones. Uh, for that second change there, if you had a chance to look at exhibit four, that kind of, uh, that breaks down what those, um, uh, what those types of rezones are, or provides some more detail, I'm sorry. Uh, and, so that is, um, that's really all I have, uh, for this. Um, like I said, the planning, planning commission, uh, recommended city council pass it, and, uh, with that, I would love to answer any questions, um, and also request, uh, council to schedule the ordinance for adoption at the July twentieth regular meeting.
Good, council, questions for Daniel? Okay, Daniel, you rested a really good job, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Alright, great. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, too. Alright, next we'll move into our community wellness discussion items, and Councilmember Malanga will chair this portion of the meeting.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, for the Community and Wellness Committee, we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is an overview of the two thousand and nineteen City of Auburn Community Development Block Grant, the solidity annual performance and evaluation report. I would like to turn it over to Director Tate to talk to us about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Malanga. Uh, and I'll, uh, turn it over to, uh, Community Services Manager Joyce Scott, who will be providing tonight's presentation and the annual paper report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Joyce Scott. I'm the Community Services Manager.
Joyce, I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you. You're, you're really quiet.
Okay, I will speak up a bit. Is that a bit better?
Not really. Not, not a lot. Can you make, move your surface a little closer to you?
Can you hear me any better now?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, great. Uh, I will do my best to speak up, and if you can't hear me at any point, please just let me know, um, and I will be happy to repeat anything that was missed. Um, so I'm here this evening to give you a little bit of information on, uh, what we submitted to HUD for our two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant program here. So, for, um, for councilmembers who have been through my previous So for um, for council members who have been through my presentations before, this slide will be familiar to you. Um, I generally talk about two different um pots of funding uh that fall within the purview of community services. One is our human services dollars, which is our direct um, direct service funds that, that are provided to nonprofit agencies through a competitive application process. Um, those are not what we're going to be discussing tonight. Um, so this evening we're talking about our Community Development Block Grant Fund um from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Um, for the two thousand nineteen program year, uh, that totaled roughly five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars um in Community Development Block Grant Funds. That amount varies every year, um, so currently we have closer to about six hundred and thirty. Um, but that's a formula, um, a formula allocation that we receive in the spring of every year. So the caper, as it's referred to by HUD, is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It provides an overview of all of the progress that the city of Auburn has made in carrying out its strategic plan and action plan requirements during the prior program year. Um, so we submit usually in March of every year um to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, reporting on um all of the progress that we made during the prior year. Uh, this presentation was actually scheduled for March, that's usually when I come before you. Um, but because of some of the uh changes to council meetings um and some cancellations earlier in the year, um, I'm here in July instead. So we are currently operating under the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four consolidated plan, which is our five-year strategic plan for how we're going to um utilize our CDVG dollars. Um, and this is a little bit of an anomaly in that our two thousand nineteen caper is actually reporting on um progress that was under our prior consolidated plan, our two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. But because of where it falls in the HUD program year, um, we submit that in two thousand twenty and um report on all of the activities from our prior strategic plan. There are a number of different administrative requirements attached to our Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, so in addition to the strategic plan, that five-year consolidated plan that I mentioned, um, we also complete eligibility reviews, uh, annual action plans that come before councils, um, usually in uh late October or early November of every year. Um, our annual performance and evaluation report, which I'm discussing this evening. And then we also undergo um a, a number of activities related to how we're dispersing those dollars, um, which include um monitoring our subrecipients annually, um overseeing the financial management, um, and also working through uh program requirements such as environmental reviews and lead mitigation. Um, those are particularly relevant for um projects that we undertake um that include construction uh and minor housing repair. So our Community Development Block Grant Program um is funding received from HUD that provides annual grants to entitled cities to develop viable urban communities. So all of the projects that we report on, um, we have to demonstrate within this report, within the caper, that they align with HUD's national objectives, that they're eligible under the guidelines and that they benefit low and moderate income persons within the city of Auburn. Some examples of the types of eligible activities for Community Development Block Grant Funds are um acquisition of property, um, public facility ADA improvements, which we have a few to report on this evening um from last year. So we're able to make um typically sidewalk improvements with the amount of funding that we receive um to either uh incorporate missing sections of sidewalk um to meet ADA requirements or um uh reasonably curb, curb ramps. Uh, we can do site preparation, uh, public services, which is um funding out to human service agencies to provide services directly to community members. That's capped at fifteen percent of our annual allocation. Um, and we do have to report each year, you'll see this in the financial summary report that was included in your packet, of what percentage um we allocated to ensure that we did not exceed our cap. Um, you can also focus on home rehabilitation, which we do in our, in our minor home repair program. Um, some limited economic development activities, um, things like micro enterprise assistance, homeownership assistance, and then uh planning and, and capacity building along with our program administration, which has a cap of twenty percent of our annual allocation. So in two thousand nineteen, our CDVG funds primarily supported the following. Uh, so our city's housing repair program, uh sidewalk ADA improvements at three sites. We provided health and dental services for on and underinsured, low-income Auburn residents. Um, we provided some job training and places services for low-income Auburn residents. Uh, and we also supported some planning and administration across, um, so some of our city staff time associated with managing the funds. Um, there's a full report included in your packet, so the full caper is there with all of the uh kind of narrative portions and the demographic breakdowns. But I wanted to just share at a high level some facts and figures of um people served. So through our housing repair program, we provided fifty-nine households um with uh rehabilitative services for their existing homes. Um, of those sixty-nine, thirty-six of the households were extremely low-income, so um at or below thirty percent of our area median income. And twenty, twenty-three households were categorized as low-income, which is that thirty to fifty percent of area median income. We also provided a hundred and twenty-two Auburn residents with medical service over two hundred and sixteen visits through our contracts with HealthPoint. Um, additionally, fifty-four Auburn residents were provided with dental services, um, and that was across a hundred and forty-five visits. Um, and we provided nine Auburn residents with employment training and space management services through a contract with HealthPoint. So a little bit more about our housing repair program, mainly because this is the, the single largest allocation out of our Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, this is where most of our funds go to support um with the city of Auburn. So we prioritize providing free home repairs for low-income homeowners within the city. So in order to qualify for uh program services, they have to live inside Auburn City limits. They need to own the home that's needing repairs. Uh, they need to live there for at least one year and plan to stay at least one year after the repairs are done. Uh, and then meet the income guidelines. So what I've included here are actually the current year income guidelines. So currently, in order to be eligible for the program, these are um, uh, our, our current year AMI figures. So for one person at, or that thirty percent area median income, it's twenty-five thousand one hundred per year. Um, and at fifty percent would be forty-one thousand eight hundred per year. So that's the cutoff for um, for our income eligibility. Um, once approved, folks can access funds for up to three years. Uh, and they don't actually access the funds directly, so we have staff that are able to provide repairs um and the cost of their time is kind of taken off of their overarching grant that's available to them. Um, but some of the repairs go beyond uh what the city can do in-house. Um, so things like, um, you know, an electrical panel, for example, or any new plumbing, um, we would be contracting out to contractors in the community um and paying those directly. So I included just um some of the demographic data that is present in the caper. Um, there's, there's quite a bit more within the full report itself. Um, but for our housing repair program, um, you'll see that uh in two thousand nineteen, sixty-one percent of the households that we serve um were underneath that thirty percent of area median income, um, which at the time was a little bit closer to twenty-four thousand, um, just under twenty-four thousand per year for a single individual. Um, and then seventy-six percent of the households that we served um were, um, households where the primary applicant was age sixty-two and over. Um, so we do serve predominantly seniors within this program, although it is not a requirement to be able to access services. I also included some of the information on ethnicity and just a, a note that we're required to use the HUD categories um within this demographic data, which doesn't always matter how the city gathers that information otherwise. Um, but because we have to report uh to HUD, we do need to use their um categories, which is how it's laid out on our housing repair application. And also some information about the age of housing. Um, so for the, for the caper report, we break it down into housing that was built um after nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-eight and prior to um nineteen seventy-eight. And that is relevant because of the additional requirements for um lead testing um and lead mitigation if there's any presence of lead found. Um, so just wanted to share a few examples of projects that we completed during the two thousand nineteen program year. Um, so I have a few before and afters for our uh housing repair program and for our sidewalk projects as well. Um, you'll see here, this was a um, a home that had a roof that was in pretty significant disrepair and was causing um some initial water intrusion uh into their home. So we were able to replace that roof for them, you'll see the before and after. Um, it's also a little bit hard to tell in this photo, but um these stairs were, uh, on the left side, um, were rotted and were causing a significant safety concern where the homeowner had um, had difficulty navigating in and out of the home um because the stairs themselves were rotted and the carpet had come away from the stairs. And so it was, it was causing a combination of both a tripping hazard um and an unstable surface. And so we were able to replace those stairs um and add a safety rail as well, which hadn't been present previously. And some of these are a little bit in process, just like the next one. Um, so this is a, this is a before and during photo, I actually don't have the after um photo here tonight. Um, but this was an initial project where um there had been prior water damage, uh prior water intrusion from a washing machine that was on the other side of this wall here um that had led to the, the presence of all of this mold that you see in the picture. Um, and so we were able to um ensure that there was no active water leak, um, remove all of the drywall that um, that had mold on it, replace it with new drywall, um, tape, paint, um redo the trim and also the flooring. Um, so this is a, not a full before and after, but um just to show you some of the, some of the projects that we um come across. And then we also um had a few sidewalk projects. Um, so with the support of our Public Works Department, um, we identified sites that would be eligible to receive CDVG dollars. Um, there's some calculations that go into that uh for, for the sidewalk improvements that are um for improving accessibility and meeting ADA guidelines. Uh, we also tend to um identify projects that are within um census block groups that are low-income um and qualify through HUD that way to be able to have those dollars applied. Um, so this is uh Tenth Street and D Street Northeast. This is actually um pretty close to the Fred Meyer Fuel Station. You'll see the before and after there. We also had um a, a small sidewalk project on M Street Southeast with our CDVG dollars, where we were able to um, to uh create a missing, build a missing link there um to ensure that folks could continue to access um a sidewalk safely, especially along a busy road. Um, and then similarly on K Street Southeast as well. Um, you'll see a before and after of our, our CDVG progress last year. We have um a few projects identified for the two thousand twenty program year, so you can expect to see uh more information on those moving forward. Um, but for two thousand nineteen, those were our key program highlights. Anyone have any questions about the caper or um anything within the presentation?
Well, we wanted to say thank you so much, Joy, for sharing this with us and thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done. Just seeing those pictures is brought to life, you know, the hard work that you guys are doing. Um, we will like to open it up for questions with the council members and I'll go ahead and start with the first question. Um, I saw that you had a number of residents that you were able to help, and you have the numbers there. But when it comes to the applications that you receive, are you guys able to help everyone? Or are there applications that um aren't able to be helped because we don't have the funds for everyone?
Yeah, so we do have um quite a waiting list. Uh, we don't turn folks away because of um, because of a waiting list. Uh, we do try to prioritize as we receive applications. So the only folks that are turned away are folks who are not eligible for the program. Um, but if they meet the eligibility guidelines, then they go into our um, kind of our overarching queue. And we really prioritize based on um immediate health and safety and kind of critical needs. Um, so uh certainly we want to ensure that folks that have been in line um for a while are receiving those services. Um, but also if there's immediate water intrusion, um, if there is um things like uh toilets that aren't functioning, um, or not having access to um kitchen sink kind of plumbing issues, um, or anything that would cause a really significant issue later on. We really try to get to those immediately. Um, and then the other one that you'll see a lot of in our program is um, is things like ramps and bathtub conversion, um, because it's such a key part of folks being able to age in place, um, which tends to be a pretty strong strategy for um, for supporting affordable housing as well if folks are able to remain where they are with some modifications to be able to do so safely. Um, so we do um unfortunately have a little bit longer of a waiting list than um, than we would prefer, but we don't turn anyone away if they are eligible for the program. Um, and for folks who might remember from presentations last year, we did undergo a pretty significant um transition in our program where we went from using entirely contractors to hiring staff in-house um that, that are able to go out and do repairs themselves. Um, and as a result of that, we're hoping um to be able to move more quickly through the repair process because we won't have to have um the same uh timeframe waiting of things like getting multiple bids for each part of the, part of the project. Um, and so unfortunately, COVID has thrown a little bit of a wrench in that um as we haven't been able to do interior projects safely. Um, but once we're back up and running, we expect that the program will be much more efficient um than in our prior model.
Councilmember Baggett has a question?
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Baggett has a question?
Yes, uh, thank you Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Uh, also Joy, I really want to appreciate uh, let you know our appreciation for the very detailed facts and figures. Uh, I'm kind of going back to page fifty-five of a hundred and one here where you talk about the medical services uh and dental services. I was, just a question, uh, do you ever provide under this program the CDVG money, uh, things that apply to sight and hearing?
Um, you know, that's an excellent question and it might be one that I need to follow up with. Um, I'm, the, the services are provided through the Auburn Health Point Clinic um and it would encompass any of the primary care services that they provide as a part of that. Um, I can follow up with um our, our staff person who oversees that contract and um get some more detailed information on that for you.
Yeah, being the president of the uh, the Lions Club uh here in Auburn, uh, I'd be very concerned about uh how much of these funds are available to people uh for the sight and hearing uh because they, right now, I think the uh, the Lions Club is dealing primarily through the Christ Free Clinic. But if Health Point offers these other services as well, I'd be very curious to find out how much uh of those two services that they are providing.
Yeah, I will follow up on that for sure and get back to you.
Thank you so much, Joy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Stern?
Yeah, hi, um, thanks, thank you council member and thank you Joy. That's uh pretty impressive, really, really, um, really positive to see all that good work being done. I, I have two questions, so um if you'll indulge me. One was, can, can you explain how the public would have input into the caper? Um, are there public hearings, that kind of thing? And number two, can, can you uh just give a quick rundown or, or overview, summary of what homelessness um projects- homelessness projects are, are in the CAPR as well? So, thank you.
Sure. So the public input question is a really good one. For the CAPR itself, we do go out for public comment, but because it's a report on what's already been accomplished, we don't prioritize public input for that stage because there isn't a lot for, for folks to be able to impact at that point. So we really prioritize public engagement in the planning for how the dollars will be spent. We, we offer a couple of public engagement points each year in our annual action plan process. So during last year's consolidated plan presentation, folks might recall that we talked about three different public meetings that we held. One was in, in conjunction with King County and how to focus more on fair housing and on, on what folks were seeing as needs in the community. But we also go out to our community partner agencies and we make ourselves available at a number of community meetings to be able to get input, both by hosting meetings and also by going where folks are and asking for their, for their input. So we typically have two key points of engagement. One is before the action plan is drafted to be able to get some feedback on how, how our community members would, would like us to see projects prioritized or how they'd like to see our dollars spent. And then is, one is after it has been drafted and folks have a chance to kind of respond to what plans we've come up with. In terms of the, the homelessness question, for our 2019 program year, there were individuals experiencing homelessness and, and also individuals who had recently exited homelessness who were served through our public services contracts. So through Health Point, those medical and dental services, as well as the job training and placement through multi-service center. But all of the other funds that we spent in 2019 were put towards the sidewalk projects and our housing repair program. So those were not serving folks experiencing homelessness.
Councilmember J. Rog has a question?
Councilmember J. Rog?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Joy, my question is fairly obvious. How would these residents know that these grants are there for them to be able to use it? Where can they come to get the application for it?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So a lot of it is, a lot of the ways that people hear about us are certainly through word of mouth and also for our residents who are living in mobile home parks. Oftentimes it's a referral by the park manager or by their neighbors who may have received services in the past. We do have our applications available online on the website, and we also stock them at our customer service center and at, at City Hall. We are, we do outreach in a few different ways, partly through our neighborhood programs, outreach and engagement, so we'll post messages on, on things like Nextdoor. And, and we also have really active referrals coming from our Parks Department. In particular, our senior center provides a number of referrals to us. Our code enforcement staff, when they come across a homeowner who may have some issues that they're experiencing, but may, maybe a little bit of support and might qualify for our program, will refer them to us for one of those applications as well. So it's really a combination of certainly having it on the website and, and doing kind of announcements and our, letting our partner agencies know, but also just through word of mouth and referrals.
Okay, thank you. One other question, and so what is the, for the home repairs, what is a maximum for a household?
So typically, we're, we have about $7,000 made available of repairs, but we have the ability to go up to just under $10,000 if there's a repair that is kind of severe or emergent enough that warrants it. Oftentimes, those are things like, you know, a roof repair, which really, it's hard to have a roof repaired for under $7,000. And oftentimes, things like ramps as well can, can get pretty expensive pretty quickly. The other situation in which we would go over that is if somebody has already utilized their, you know, $7,000 grant, but then they have an immediate health and safety repair need that comes up, that falls below that $9,999 max. So as you saw in the presentation, folks have three years to be able to use their grant funding. And then they have, they have a five-year waiting period from the time they're accepted into the program to when they can apply again. So some households may have received multiple grants if they've been in their house for quite some time, but there is that waiting period in between when folks are able to apply.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Councilmember DeFoe, DeFoe Corsey has a question?
Okay. Councilmember DeFoe Corsey?
Thank you, Chair. I just, just a quick comment, you know, with Councilmember Baggett and I living in the River Park, I know a number of our residents here have had work done through the city and they really do understand the process to go through, so it's quite a conversation point here where we live. And as a matter of fact, my neighbor two houses down north of me had their roof replaced a couple of years ago, a little less than two years ago now, under this process. And the contractor that did their roof actually was the contractor that had the best bid for doing the roof on my house, which was not done under this program, it was under my finances. But, you know, once we see somebody working in the park, there's usually quite a conversation as to what's being done, who's doing it, basically how it's being paid for. So I think it's, it's pretty good that word of mouth, as Joy mentioned, really works and is a good marketing tool.
Absolutely. And I think that now, now that we have a staff person who's doing repairs, who's, who's at these homes in the city of Auburn van, that also helps get the word around as well.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the second agenda item, which is ordinance number 6780, amending Auburn City Code to incorporate a Just Cause Eviction Ordinance into Title V. I would like to turn it over to Director Tate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this evening, we'd like to present a concept that's been talked about at prior council meetings, but not this year. So for some of you, there may be some redundancy and a few of the things that I'll present on tonight. Before jumping into that, I do want to call out that as, as we talk about Just Cause Eviction Ordinance and as council has questioned, I may field those questions, I may answer some, but also important are Joy Scott, who you just turned on, as well as Dan Hyde from the attorney's office. Between the three of us, which should be able to?
Director Tate? Sorry, we're having a very hard time hearing you. You're coming in and out.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I, I know you said that with Joy too, and I never heard her fading in and out on my end.
It's better since she was set forward.
Okay, I'll, so important to the conversation are Dan Hyde and Joy Scott. So as questions arise, I may field those and direct some of those questions to Joy and Dan as well. This starts on page 86 of your packet, ordinance 6780. And real quickly, in principle, a Just Cause Eviction Ordinance is not something that would be unique to Auburn. A number of municipalities have adopted Just Cause Eviction Ordinances. And they're really designed to protect tenants from being forced to use a rental home without a reasonable justification. So as you peruse ordinance 6780, that's one of the primary pieces of language that is included in there, what are the reasons in which a landlord would be evicting a tenant? And we can walk through what those reasons look like, we can get to that section of the ordinance. But before diving into those, I also want to call out that within this draft ordinance, there are also proposals to require additional notification timeframes for increases in rent above a certain amount of rental increase. That's a particularly important principle as well. And council has some options in terms of the number of days or the percent increase and things of that nature. So I want, I want to pause on that for a minute as well, just to get through that. In the agenda bill, I have outlined a few policy questions, and I think those are important for council to consider this evening. So I'll revisit those questions as well. But I also, before jumping into that, just want to highlight one of the timing issues or concerns as to why this ordinance is being brought forward to council right now. As council knows, the governor has issued a temporary moratorium on eviction, a residential eviction. And that temporary moratorium right now is set to expire on August 4. The governor has the prerogative potentially to extend that, but right now, we just don't know whether that'll happen. And this is the case with other governor orders. In fact, we don't know until the day or two before something is set to expire, so learn that it's going to be extended. So one of the timing considerations right now that is a concern, not in, just in Auburn, but in our region, our state, in our country, is what happens after a residential eviction moratorium expires? And is there concern over a potential for a spike in eviction that would occur due to folks that have been unable to fully pay their rent during these last few months? So I do want it to be kind of front and center that the timing consideration is a particularly important. That is why we are drafting the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance presenting at the council and suggesting that council consider moving this forward for action at the next council meeting. The, I think just in terms of going into the specifics of what Just Cause Eviction is, it, it might be important to move into the, the ordinance itself and it's creating a new chapter within Auburn City Code. It would be Chapter 5.24. And council is accustomed to seeing modifications of codes, and usually that comes in a strike through underline format. And I just wanted to mention that the reason to see Chapter 5.24 without any strike through or underlining is because it's fully a whole new chapter of the city code. So everything that you read in there would be used language in our Auburn City Code. And it's Section 5.4.070 in that code that outlines what Just Cause Eviction is. And there, that's where it would spell out the, the purpose, the reasons in which a landlord could evict a tenant. So that is outlined on page 96. And it just, it just outlines the circumstances under which it's, it's appropriate for a landlord to move forward with, with an eviction. And I'm reluctant to go through one by one what those are, more inclined to answer questions about what any of those specific areas, what they mean, or if you'd like more detail on those. But that is where you're going to find the body or the bulk of the language and what we would in the future, if adopted, be providing to landlords to utilize as their, their guidelines for how they make eviction decisions. I also want to call out, as I mentioned, there's policy questions that I think council should consider discussing. And first is that in Section 5.4.040, please, please, point one, the handful, but really what it says is it establishes that threshold and timeframe for rental notice increases. Now I'll just call out that currently, state law requires a 60-day notice of a rental increase. So that's our baseline. That happens in every community. What we've proposed is that if a rental increase is going to be more than 5% of the rent, that a bigger or a longer notification timeframe be established. And we've drafted that as a 120-day notification. So it's important to think about those two numbers. 5% is kind of a midpoint, and in the agenda bill, we pointed out that there could be, it could be a 3%, it could be 5%, it could be 7%. And we've put some numbers in there for what that would generally look like in real dollars. A 3% increase, using the average or the median rental rate would be about a $50 a month increase. A 5% is about an $85 a month, 7% is about $120 a month. So that's what those percentages look like for an average situation. Additionally, the 120-day timeframe is sort of a midpoint as well. It could potentially be 90 days, yes, or it could be 150 or 180 days. We wanted to call that out because we think that for folks who, we don't want to tie the hands of a landlord to increase rent, the level that they need to increase it by, but if a tenant needs to make different living arrangements, 60 days would be a trump turn on time for a tenant to raise the amount of money that they need for a deposit, the first of last, or any other moving costs associated with having to make a decision to move out because they couldn't afford that rent. So that's just the additional timeframe of, in this case, in the draft ordinance of 120 days. So I think that's an important principle to call out that's reflected in this draft ordinance as well. And then the last thing is, as pointed out in the agenda bill, is a temporary provision that has a sunset date in the ordinance. And that means that it would expire further down the road, a year down the road. And one of the things that the governor's order currently says on residential eviction is there's a principle in that order that says that landlords should work with tenants to develop repayment plans if they fell behind as a result of COVID-19, you know, the loss of a job, the inability to pay rent. So one of the worries that we have is that come August 1st, if the moratorium expires, so too does the repayment plan requirement. So the moratorium eventually will expire, whether it's August 1st, September 1st, or January 1st, remains the same. But once that moratorium expires, that's when you really have to have the ability for landlords and tenants to work on repayment plans before eviction is considered. So we're worried that if the moratorium expires, that that too goes away. Therefore, we've included, and this is a unique provision that would be in Auburn's ordinance and not a provision that would be in New Orleans or Federal Way or Seattle, but we try to incorporate that principle so that it has a, it lives for a period of time beyond the August 1 expiration of the ordinance. And I think those are the main principles. There are details, you know, programmatic details in terms of getting information out to landlords and tenants, being able to put items on our webpage, you know, how we deal with enforcement or, you know, getting involved in a landlord tenant issue at a later date. And no, no doubt that there's implementation details that we will need to sort out and put into effect as well. I do want to maybe end on the point that right now, the city has no real ability to intervene in landlord tenant issues. There is a landlord tenant law. That law really applies to, as the title indicates, landlords and tenants. So there are, that is not a law that the city enforces. The city doesn't have the authority to enforce landlord tenant laws by and The city doesn't have the authority to enforce landlord/tenant laws by and large. If it gets into a living condition issue or a health issue, we have some ways in at times. But most of the time, our answer to that is someone complains about a landlord or a tenant issue is that there's a different process that you need to go through to work out those issues. And the city is happy to provide resources and some information, but is not going to be taking a very strong role in landlord/tenant matters. This ordinance would give us an ability to do that in some cases. And so it gives us one more tool if we're approached by either the landlord or the tenant. With that, I will take a breath for a second and turn it back to council for any questions. And again, if a question comes up, I will either answer it or I'll request a damage.
Thank you, Director Tate, for that great presentation. I would like to open up to my fellow council members to see if anybody has any comments or questions.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Sterns.
Hi, thank you, Jeff. That was really, really good. Yeah, and I absolutely agree that it would be something that our city should, you know, should aspire to, to protect our tenants. So my question is, like, if a landlord violates, you know, unjustly evicts a tenant, it sounds like the city would be able to, you know, I guess, enforce or, you know, try to direct behavior by issuing a penalty. But what about the tenant, him or herself? I mean, they've been unjustly evicted, or, you know, what are their rights? And how does the city help, if we can, you know, make the tenant whole? I mean, they've got moving costs and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, and I know other jurisdictions have looked at doing that, like Buryan, for instance. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I have a couple. And it all depends upon the timing. You know, sometimes we hear from the tenant before the eviction occurs. Oftentimes, we hear from the tenant after the eviction occurs. So it's really going to depend upon when the interaction takes place. So if we are involved prior to the actual eviction, we have an opportunity to be able to approach a landlord and inform the landlord of what the laws are. So that is probably the easier instance. The harder one is, what if they come to us after the eviction has already occurred? Now, I will say, even in that case, we have the ability to approach the landlord, inform the landlord of what the laws are and what rules are in place. But if, and if there's a finding that there's a violation and there's a fine that's levied with that, we have the ability, as written in the code, to be able to use those fines to help the tenant. So we don't necessarily have to collect a fine and put it in the city account. We can take that money and put it towards the tenant. So that's an important tool because we know that that's going to happen sometimes. So that is what some other municipalities have in place as well. We have the ability to use those funds that are collected. And I got to say, I mean, our hope in enforcement is always never to collect any money. We want compliance, we're not trying to generate revenue through code enforcement. That will remain a fundamental principle of our code enforcement team. But if that's the scenario, and we find that there's a violation, and we find that this caused a fine to landlords, we have the ability to collect that fine and then help offset the tenant's.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Baggett has a question?
Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Jeff. Again, this is quite an extensive document here that's prepared. And I just had a question relative to, or a clarification, if you will, regarding, I think on page 87 of the package there's, in the third paragraph there, in item number six, we talk about the city not having the authority, and I think you addressed that in some of the closing statements that you made, and that the city does not have authority to enforce those laws. Well, this, if this JCEO is approved, then it becomes a law in our city. And would this, in fact, actually be enforced?
Yeah, I mean, we have an enforcement provision in there. It's the last section of this code. And it would be our intent, again, philosophically, to always be educated. That is our enforcement philosophy. That'll remain our enforcement philosophy. But it does give us the authority to act. And there's a number of tools at our fingertips on how we, on any enforcement case, is how we act. From, you know, simple notices to correct, that don't levy any fines, but establish, you know, what the requirements are and perhaps a change in a practice. Fines, that is, you know, not what we want to do, but it's important to have those as a fact stuff. We have, all rental properties have to have a business license in Auburn, so we have licensing authority there. So this, if adopted, would definitely give us the ability to intervene and participate in, you know, however the language is, you know, all the terms within the code, we'd have the ability to enforce that.
Good, thank you.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey has a question?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Thank you. Jeff, related to the threshold items that you've mentioned that we need to discuss as policy questions, you know, looking at the percentages of increase and knowing that in our current situation, that we still have many tenants who are under the moratorium, but once the moratorium is lifted, as you mentioned, could be facing some pretty significant repayment items related to their past rent. And as I mentioned in our last council meeting, that's a concern, not only regionally, but also nationally, related to how potential rent burden tenants are going to be able to make up the difference of the last three, four, five, six months, or whatever the timeframe may be, while still trying to maintain their current rent that is established. So within that threshold, we look at, for example, the 5% increase of $85 a month on a $1,733 per month rental rate. Has there been any consideration of looking at tying increases to the CPI? So let's say, for example, that somebody who is working gets a 2% cost of living increase, or perhaps a 2% merit increase annually. They will fall behind continuously by not keeping up and be able to look at a 5% increase as sustainable, which could potentially put them back into or create for them a rent burden situation. Where if we look at something under CPI, it could vary naturally with the percentage rates, but there may be an opportunity to look at that as a potential option. And have other jurisdictions looked at that at all, or have they just established the thresholds and the range?
I think this is where I'll ask if Joy might be able, I'm not sure Joy has the answer to the question, but I'm going to punt over to her as she's, before she jumps in. The reason that Joy, one, she has a specialty in this area in prior work, prior working to Auburn, but also has a good connection to South King Housing Partners. So she's in frequent interaction with many of our South King County neighbors. So that's why I'm going to ask if Joy can maybe chime in and see if there's another community that's done that.
Thank you so much. So I have not seen another community that has used that particular calculation. And I will say that when I've been in conversations with other cities about what they found to be most important through this process, one of the things that they called out is that landlord/tenant laws are really complex, and they are only as useful as they are understood by both landlords and tenants. And so the interest of a lot of cities is they've been trying to figure out, particularly the education component that Jeff mentioned, is how do we ensure that we're creating guidelines that are kind of easily referenced and easily understood of what that means? And so that tenants don't have to do a lot of research to be able to figure out if what they received was an allowable increase under the law. So the examples that I've seen are all percentage-based. I can certainly see, I can do some research and see if any other community has tied it to the CPI. It would certainly be interesting to see. But I know that there's definitely an interest to ensure that it's as kind of easily understood as quickly as possible of what's allowed and what isn't.
Councilmember Jay Raj has a question? Councilmember Jay Raj, if you're speaking, you're muted.
Councilmember Jay Raj?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question, and that's on page 96. The tenant habitually fails to pay rent, due to which causes owner to notify the tenant in writing late rent four or more times in a 12-month period. So is this rule pretty hard? Is it set, hard set kind of a deal?
Well, and that's-
Or is it up to the discretion of the owner?
I think in that particular case, what it's saying is that if a tenant has paid rent at least or more, four or more times, and they've been late-
Right.
-there's a threshold that the landlord could use to say, this is a tenant that is, you know, basically a poor performer, and they can proceed with an eviction process. So I think that when you use language like four or more, the landlord is in a position to either use a hard line of four or could extend it to five or six different appearances for that happen. But that gives the landlord justification for moving forward with an eviction.
Okay, so that was the question, if it's up to the discretion of the landlord after four times?
Yeah.
Okay, great, that's what I needed to know.
Councilmember Brown has a question?
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, you know, this looks like a short-term benefit for renters and to help avoid homelessness. What are the longer-term implications as far as housing, housing stock, potential for impact on the relative, you know, the overall homelessness situation?
I don't know how to answer that in a quantifiable way. This is a housing stability ordinance. So where communities have adopted these ordinances, they're designed to try to reduce homelessness. And I think that part of the reason that it's attractive, or it's been the topic of conversation in Auburn a few times in the past, is that other communities have done it, and other communities have found it to be an effective means, one of many. So one of the effective means to help ensure that there's housing stability, especially when there's unpredictable economic conditions that can occur. So that's not a real good answer in terms of stating that this will reduce homelessness or prevent homelessness by X percent. I don't think that we have, we're able to speculate on that. But again, I want to ensure that it's clear that it's characterized in any community that's been adopted as a housing stability ordinance in order to help prevent homelessness.
Thank you, Director.
And if I could add just one more item to that, this is Joy. One of the long-term anecdotal impacts that we've heard from communities that have had this in effect for some time is that there's a positive effect on the health of the housing, the standards and the quality of the housing. Because one of the challenges, particularly for tenants who are in month-to-month tenancies, is that there's a fear of reporting when something needs to be repaired or when there's an issue with the unit. Because currently, you know, there are certainly a lot of stories out there. We hope that this would not happen in Auburn, but, you know, where a tenant reports that something in the unit needs to be repaired, or that something is leaking, or something like that. And then they're faced with a termination of their month-to-month tenancy, and they have 20 days to move. And so oftentimes, that serves as a deterrent for people to be able to identify housing issues in their units that are about kind of health and safety. And that ends up being a negative, not only for the tenant, but for the landlord, who doesn't necessarily know that repairs need to be made if they're not in the unit on a regular basis. So we've heard anecdotally from communities that have had this in place for some time, that they do see kind of an increase in the quality of their housing stock because there's less fear of reporting those healthy housing issues.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Sterns?
Wrong, thank you, council member. But Jeff, can we add in, or maybe does, you know, something that Councilmember Jay Raj mentioned, which is, you know, sort of the routine, and I think it's four times if you're late, if you're late four times. But, and then Councilmember Brown really maybe think a little bit more about that because, you know, we do want to prevent people from going into homelessness situations. And it does seem that, you know, a lot of people get paid on the first, and it's hard to make that immediate turnaround and make rental payments on the first. Is there, you know, is there a grace period in our city? And is that something we could address? Because if a family has a hard time making a payment on the first, it's, my guess is it's going to be way more than four times a year.
Yeah, so I assume what you're talking about is if rent is due on the first, that late fees and penalties don't occur until the fifth or the seventh. That's the kind of good story you're talking about?
Right, yes.
So I'm going to, I mean, that's a common term to have in a lease agreement, and I'm not sure if that is because it's a requirement of the landlord/tenant laws already, or if it's just common practice. But I guess I'll ask to see if, maybe I'll start with Dan, and ask Dan if he's aware, and then maybe if Dan's not aware, then we can turn it to Joy, just to make sure we hit all the bases here on staff. So, Dan, are you aware of anything that is already in place or that we can do with respect to grace periods?
Well, one of the things that, and we've had Joy and you, Jeff, and I've talked about when we were putting this together, is we have to be careful that we cannot usurp the contract authority that's been entered into between the landlord and tenant. And we really have to rely upon state law in terms of the remedies that might exist. If we were to impose something that was in direct conflict with a contract in which the tenant and landlord entered, it could be challenged as such because we don't have that authority. That doesn't mean that we don't work with them and try to encourage cooperation. And that's one of the things that this ordinance does try to do, is to put the city in a position where it can influence those things. But we don't, we don't- where it can influence those things, but we don't, we don't, at this point, have control, at least without a change in the state law.
Thank you, Dan. Joy, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that that, that covers it.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you so much for allowing the Community Wellness Committee to have our time on the agenda. I'd like to turn it back to Deputy Mayor DeCoursey. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Relling. I thank you for filling in. It's an excellent job, and thank you everybody for the presentations. Do we have any other discussion items this evening? Any new business? All right, hearing none. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.
Bye.
Have a good evening.